... nineteenth Board of Selectmen's meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Selectman Manise, Titlebaum, Chairman Trappiano, and Clerk Bruce are present, as well as Town Council and Town Administrator.
Very good. Pledge of Allegiance. Could I have the gentlemen from the Veterans Committee, please, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Well, this is gonna be easy tonight. Announcements are gonna be pretty fast. Announcements, please. Jim, you're on.
We'll have more announcements.
No announcements?
We have a Kiva Wareham...
Pull your mic in. We have before they...
Right in that microphone.
We have a Kiva Marion Wareham subcommittee meeting Friday, 9:00 AM over in Atlantis Ave, Seventeen Atlantis Ave in Marion. And I think that's about it for announcements. Thanks.
Okay. Just Titlebaum.
Nothing, I am hungry.
All right. Mary?
I'll be fast. Wareham Library Foundation presents a comedic play that will keep you laughing. The Complaint Department in Lemonade will be Friday, October 18th, 6:30 to 9:30 at the Redmond Hall. Tickets at $25 and can be purchased at the Wareham Free Library or at the door during the night of the play. All proceeds benefit the Wareham Library Foundation. Appetizers, desserts, and raffles. Cast members include Jim Mendes, George Ripley, Marcia Hickey, Shelley Montron, Mary Bruce, Peter Titlebaum, Ken Buckland, Sonia Reposo, Harry Nikolov, and Noah Young. So I hope to see you guys then. Also, the Wareham Free Library is having a used book sale, Monday, October 28th, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Tuesday, October 29th, 9:00 AM to 5:30 PM. Wednesday, October 30th, 9:00 AM to 5:30 PM. Thursday, October 31st, 1:00 PM to 7:30 PM. And Saturday, November 2nd, 9:00 AM till noon. Proceeds benefit the Friends of the Wareham Free Library.
Okay, awesome. Citizens' comments. I don't see anybody. All right. Next on, board comments. Board comments, Jim?
I'd like to say that municipal maintenance has been doing some work on the street drains and doing a great job and appreciate their efforts. Thanks, Mr. Sullivan, also. And I think we don't really realize how much work they do at times, you know, with a small crew and having to put out fires as well as just the regular day-to-day. So, thank you. That's all.
Peter?
Thank you.
I'm still hungry.
Mary?
Nothing.
All right. So, the Wareham Village Association and the Onset Bay Association got together and had that, the truck festival down there this weekend. They had a lot of people. They were short some trucks. A few of the trucks didn't show up or whatever. But, you know, as I understand, these things take time to develop. But there were a lot of people there, and I'll tell you what, it did really well for Main Street, 'cause those restaurants were packed down there, which was really good. So if they could have one of those every week, the people would be happy as heck, I'll tell you down there. It was unbelievable. I went into Mama Mary's, and you couldn't even get in. There was a line up, the thing, the seats were all filled. I heard it was that way down, the whole strip, so they did a nice job for a first-year attempt. I know that the one that's in Plymouth now that's been going on for quite a while, which is huge now, and almost the whole waterfront and the whole thing down there, has taken some time to build. So it takes time, and I hope they keep working at it, and maybe it'll be good. All right. Next up...
The charter was good.
The charter was good?
Yeah, the lobster bisk was good.
I saw it in your hand, but I didn't see you eat it, so...
It was good.
All right, well, that's good. I should've called, get an appointment. All right. All right, let's, we have an interview for Charter Review Commission with Jackie Nichols. Come on down, Jackie. Now, we're gonna pretend we don't know you. At all.
Hello?
All right, we'll give you, you can give us a little pitch if you want, and then we'll ask questions of you if we have any.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Nichols. I'm a resident here, have been for a while, and I am interested in serving on the Charter Review Committee. The reason I wanna do this is I feel that everybody who wants to have any kind of impact in their town needs to step up and engage, and I haven't done so so far, so here I am.
That's awesome.
Ready, willing, and able.
All right. Any questions of the board?
Just my regular question. What do you believe the role and your role is for the Charter Review Committee?
I think that the Charter Review Committee is important because the charter is basically our operations manual, so to speak. And as we go forward into the future, that manual needs to be updated occasionally as we see legislative and economic changes with the town. We need to keep up. Does, do I think that there's anything necessarily wrong with it? Do I have any sort of agenda at this point? No, I don't. But I think that it's something that we need to keep in our mind as we're changing, to change with it.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I know Jackie served on the Dog Park Study Committee and did a great job there, so very comfortable voting for her for this position.
Well, you're like, you know, you're kinda one of those known commodities, so it's kinda hard to really ask you any questions, you know? But, all right. Anybody else? No? All right. So, we're not gonna vote tonight, we're gonna vote next week, because Alan wants to be here for the vote, okay? So we're gonna put the vote off till next week. But, thank you, and we look forward to having you serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we're putting both of these off?
Yeah, we're gonna put the votes off until next week, so...
Okay.
All right. Now, I'm gonna go and jump down to the update from the Wareham Veterans Council, so we can get them out of here. Not that, not that we're trying to rush you, but I know that you said earlier, "What time are we on?" So come on up. Come on up and sit down and tell us what's happening.
I'm the chairman of the Wareham Veterans Council.
Julio Rodrick, also a member of the Veterans Council.
All right, so, gentlemen, what do you wanna tell us about the Veterans Day ceremony, I'm assuming?
We gave you all a handle that, right now, is pretty close to what we're looking for at Veterans Day, at the VFW. Colonel Matt Stan will be handling the chairman and the welcome and introduction part. Right now, what we have settled down to as the Veterans Day proclamation will be done by the chairman, Mr. Trappiano will be doing that. He'll be handing it off to me. So that will be, that is set. The, so far, the Junior Hour OTC will be involved. Erwin Russell is a VFW chaplain. He will be giving his sermon. Mass Maritime Academy will be doing a, a portion of what we call the Cullagod. Basically, that's all I have right now. This is subject to change, and if it does, I'll request another agenda meeting for you and keep you updated.
That would be nice.
It's pretty similar to last year. Susan Gifford's already confirmed she's gonna be there. We're still waiting on Sandra Pacico. Everything else is just about all set.
Okay, awesome.
It'll be 11:00 AM on November 11th, which is a Monday.
Okay.
Be a luncheon to follow.
Yeah, just like always, right? Yeah, downstairs. That's always a good time, so... We used to go down and serve, but, you know, to tell you the truth, you get a lot of servers now. So you get down there and there's, you're fighting to get, "Give me a spoon."
Yeah, yeah.
And that's good, 'cause you get so many people that are willing to help out. That's great.
Lot of volunteers.
Yeah, a lot of volunteers, and it's nice.
Do you seek donations for the luncheon, or are you doing it all in-house, sir?
We're pretty all set. Peer View donates food.
Right.
Mama Mary's given us food, and a couple other women auxiliary, they're bringing food.
We'll be cooking food and bringing it down, and...
We, last year, we had more than enough, so we're pretty sure we have more than enough.
You can tell I'm always concerned about the food.
Most of the volunteers do get hungry.
Yeah. Great.
All right, great. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your work.
If you keep us updated, it'd be awesome. Thank you so much. All right. Let's see. How can I do that? Why don't I do that? So what commission is it? Yeah, I wanna do the school building committee. Let's do the update and vote on the school building committee, please. If you could read the names, we'll just make the motion, and we'll go from there.
This is a confirmatory vote, correct?
It's a confirmatory vote, yeah. And I did, they gave me a list. There are two people that I added to it. One was the building commissioner. I don't know that he'll be there, but he's a statutory requirement, so I added him to the list. And the other one is, is that Judy Capriccio, who was on the original one, and I saw her, and she said she still wants to be on it. Did anybody talk to her about that? So should we add, I'm gonna add her back on. If we wanna do something and she wants to send in a thing, we can take her off, okay? All right, go ahead. Why don't you read the list?
Okay. You want me to...
You just move that we confirm the appointments.
Yeah.
I move that we confirm the appointments of the following. Jackie DeGrace, David Heard, Michael Hootlet, Michael Clements, Dave Menard...
One thing, I just wanna, I want everybody to know that those all, those are, some of them are statutory positions that they represent, that go across. So even though we're doing the names, they correspond to a position in most cases, okay? There are a few at large ones, but basically, there's the superintendent and different odd positions, okay? Selectmen, you know, whatever, finance committees, so on. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Michelle Montron, Bernard Pigeon, Joan Siemens, Kim Shaver-Hood, Derek Sullivan, Jeff Swett, Rhonda Wagon, Steve Wrights? Am I saying that right? Sorry. I apologize. Joyce Bakayaki, Patrick Trappiano, Bethany Chandler, Dean DeKes, Michael Flaherty, Jamie Andrews, Judy Capriccio, and David Morris to the school building.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. I'm gonna abstain. So it'll be 3-0-1, and the only reason that is because I'm in the list.
Yep.
Okay? All right, so that's good. We've updated the list, okay? That's terrific. All right, next, let's go back to, let's see, Charter Review, we're gonna, you wanna do, before we, 'cause these guys are gonna be, it'll be a while. How long do you think your presentation's gonna be?
Twenty minutes, plus or minus?
Twenty minutes? Okay. So I'm just gonna get a couple of other things out of the way, okay? And then we'll get to your presentation. All right. Now, we need to discuss the term of expiration for Charter Review. Typically, the Charter Review sunsets when they bring their stuff to town meeting, at the next annual town meeting.
Yep.
Which in this case would be 2020 April. And then I think we keep it until May usually, because there's some little work maybe that might need to be done and clean up after town meeting. But that's up to you guys, how long you wanna have the committee operate.
That'd be 2021, right?
Well, no, it's 2020. Typically, it would be 2020 because it's in the year of, it's in the year of a nine that you would do the appointment now. We are late with the appointment, just so you know, it's late. And then you appoint them in nineteen, and then by 2020, they should've done the work and then, then put it in a town meeting and then cleaned it, whatever, up at the end of that. Typically, that's how you...
I can read the charter provision. I've got it right up on my phone.
Okay, go ahead.
If you'd like. It's under Article Seven, Section Seven-Dash-One Charter Changes, and this is subsection B, periodic review. The Board of Selectmen shall, in every year which ends in nine, appoint a committee to review the charter. Said committee shall submit a report with recommendations to the first annual town meeting that ends in zero concerning any proposed amendments or revisions to the charter which it believes to be necessary or desirable. And it says this article shall become effective in year 1999. And it was approved at the spring 1999 town meeting, the annual town meeting. So what this basically says is they get appointed this year, and then they've gotta come back in the spring and deliver their report.
Right, which is gonna get, put them really under the gun. They haven't got much time.
That's not realistic.
That's not...
I'd say spring 2021 would be realistic.
What if...
I don't think we have the authority to go beyond that, because there's, they have no purview after the spring 2020 town meeting.
They'd have to give a report no matter what in 2020, 'cause they gotta do it in the 20.
And ask for continuation.
But maybe we could, maybe we could stretch it to fall.
I think Alan had said that they, it was eighteen months the last time. I don't know the technicality. Maybe our esteemed attorney could fill us in.
I just don't know if we have the authority to go beyond what the charter says.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This committee exists solely by virtue of Section Seven-Dash-One-B of the charter. And that confers the full jurisdiction of the committee's existence and its full life. So, the plain words of Seven-One-B are, "Board of Selectmen appoints in a year which ends in nine." So there's your starting point. The committee has the authority to review the charter and submit a report with recommendations. That's their sole task, so that's the full extent of their jurisdiction. And that report is to be delivered at the first, first annual town meeting that ends in zero. So, that's it. They get appointed now, in the year that ends in nine. They deliver their report with recommendations at the first annual town meeting of 2020.
I know the last time they actually did it in the fall of 2010, if I, in fact, I think, maybe Madam Moderator can recall. Was it the fall or the spring that we had the six-night marathon?
Jeez, I don't remember. I think it was spring, yeah.
Was it the spring? So they did come back?
So they did come back in spring.
Okay.
Well, it's the charter requires them to give the report at 2020, in spring.
You know, it...
Does it say annual?
Says that the next annual town meeting.
Says first annual town meeting, so...
Because we have two annuals now, as you well know, but that wouldn't matter, the first one's still April.
Well, I was thinking along the lines that you and Jim were, because I was thinking, well, you know, annual town meeting, the fall is now an annual town meeting. But then when I sat down and actually read the language first...
I mean, we've gotta give them enough, I mean, let's say they do come up with a bunch of stuff, and then they've gotta, I mean, you don't wanna do it the night of town meeting, because what if it runs over a couple of weeks? So you've gotta give them some more time after that.
They could give a report and request...
More time?
More time, if they felt they needed it, to complete their task. I mean...
We could give them more time. Is there anything stopping us from giving them more time later if they needed it?
We could create an ad hoc one and just reappoint the same people.
Yes, we could, right?
Yeah.
With your permission, Mr. Chairman. If you violate the plain words of the charter, the charter police aren't gonna come around and arrest you. So...
Shucks.
And I don't have a badge, so it won't be me. All I can say is what it says, which is, appoint them in nine, hear the report at the first annual in, a year ending in zero. And beyond that, you're beyond what the charter says.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. It looks like the fall 2010 town meeting warrant had ninety-one articles.
That's the one. It was fall.
The one, so it was the fall.
So they actually went beyond what they should've.
They should've come to the, so they didn't come until fall with the last...
So did they bring the items to the spring and then submit them for a fall town meeting?
No.
Just a report.
Why don't we, why don't we just set them up to go for 2020 in April, right? And we'll, we'll instead set it in May. But with the time, that maybe we'll reappoint them or something.
We can create our own charter. We can create our own committee.
If they need time.
If they need it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I've seen this provision in, in other charters, and it, because Wareham's charter was written by a fellow by the name of Michael Curran, who had a charter writing business in the early seventies, and he wrote probably, he was a very talented guy, he wrote probably half the charters in Massachusetts. And so a lot of them are very similar. So when I offer this opinion, I think it's drawn from what I think perhaps Michael intended. I think Michael's idea was that you would have the charter review in that nine to first annual town meeting in zero. They make a report with recommendations. That didn't mean that they were gonna come in at that time with a whole bunch of articles to change the charter. So they come in with their recommendations in the spring. You've got time to digest them. You might love some of the suggestions, you might dislike some of them, but at least you then have from the report through to the deadlines for the fall town meeting to put in the, the charter change articles you think that are important. So I don't think they were trying to cram everything through.
Right.
I think it's really of a two-step.
All right, so let's not sunset the committee until after the October town meeting.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I think the idea was, this isn't a charter commission, it's a charter, which is, which is a different thing.
Just a review.
It's just a review. And so the review committee says, you know, "Hey, you really have to fix this provision. It's out of step." And then it's up to the Board of Selectmen or citizens to initiate the articles that would facilitate the suggested change.
That makes sense, I guess. All right, so somebody make me a motion, and we'll go from there.
Why don't we give, I move that we set the term for the members previously appointed to the Charter Review Committee, and any upcoming members who will be appointed to the Charter Review Committee to expire no earlier than May 15th, 2020.
Okay. All right. And that way, it'll give them time to put the stuff in the suggestions and then, like he says, we can go in in October with the...
Yeah, that's typically when the articles are supposed to come anyway, if there is anything.
Okay. All right. I hear a...
She's seconded.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0. Okay, so that takes care of that. Now we got that out of the way, right?
Yep.
So that'll get on there. So now, if anybody's listening to me who's on the Charter Committee, you need to go to the, tomorrow, the, the paperwork will be ready in our office. You go into the office, you get your paperwork, you get down and you get sworn in down at the clerk's office, okay? The paperwork, they'll put the dates in and everything, and you can all get sworn in, and we get you going right away, 'cause obviously, we've got short time, so... All right, next. We can do these other little things afterwards. Let's get the presentation up here. Discussion with the sewer department and the sewer commissioners and the regarding articles on the town meeting warrant. Could you, gentlemen, all come up, please? Do you need any presentation software or anything, or you're gonna use the...
Just if we can use a laptop.
Yep, you can. You can set up whatever you need to do, and we'll get a good presentation here.
I know you said gentlemen, but I'm including myself.
I'm sorry. Ladies and gentlemen. And then I need you to just say who you all are, so that, for the record, so they can put it in the minutes, please.
I'm good.
I'm good, thank you.
Patrick, you need a water?
I'd love one, actually.
How are you feeling?
Tired. Good. Couple of issues, but yeah, yeah. Very sensitive to light.
Oh.
Very sensitive to light, this is crazy.
Can you see that all right and everything?
Yep.
Okay.
Lucky I have the light off.
No, I think he likes, you like one on, Bob? Yeah, 'cause otherwise he can't get the people and stuff. All right, so each of your names would be great, and where you're from and all that, and then we'll go from there.
Mark Drainville. I'm a principal with GHD Engineers.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Russ Kleikamp, and I'm an engineer with GHD Engineers.
Okay.
Guy Campina, sewer department.
Sandy Slaven, clerk of the sewer commission.
All right, so I'm gonna just let you guys go, turn, do your presentation. This is, for everybody's edification, this is about an article that we have that's going to, to help or hopefully eliminate the issue that we have with odors and so on at the plant. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that is correct. There's a slight technical issue with the computer here. We're not showing on the screen what we're showing on the computer.
Okay. Derek? We got a, we got a professional. We'll send him right over. We got the professional right over here. He knows what to do.
Get a screen. I don't know if he's got it plugged in or...
I didn't touch anything, and when I hit it, it popped up, so...
Is it even connected? To the serial port? No?
Yep. Not off, it's a good start already.
USB.
You guys are getting this one passing.
Yeah.
Let you see if I can...
Yeah.
It was... Oh. Dropped a team.
You never make those shots.
I have to throw something in his head in order to...
That's why he's not, that's why he doesn't play basketball.
I know.
I have to throw over his head in the desk, maybe he's assessed directly off the USB.
Yeah.
Yeah, I might do it.
Ready? Behind, over the shoulder, behind the back.
Besides the fact that he's too short.
No.
Not even close.
No. Wide right.
Thank you.
It just came up.
Hmm. It's actually showing that bottom bar.
Is that the computer that was on the table?
Yeah.
I couldn't get that to work myself. You have to have a password to get it.
Show us PowerPoint.
Something, or no?
It doesn't do like, it finally expires.
I have no idea.
Oh, it's on FanLog.
Hmm.
So low.
I know. Well, that chair's still broken, isn't it?
Can you even log on to that computer?
I don't know, but my knees are...
Excuse me. Derek, can you even log on to the computer?
Yep, you're showing the screen right there.
It's just the screen, but was the operating system, and that little flag on the left, can you keep going left?
But I guess that's better. Sounds like I was looking up to you.
You do, really, don't you?
I do, yeah. That's true. The chair, I was down, I was all the way down to the bottom. I lost my hydraulics, and I'm like...
He sank way down, and he was like, bad like this.
I keep, I'm looking up at her like this, like she's 17 tall. I just shut down the power. You know what it's doing? I thought they had one chair that was bad, but I thought they took it out. It isn't here.
So you have to unear it?
No.
Let me try one thing right here. I thought it was sitting over there the other day, and it was an extra, anyway. Are you telling people chairs? The high back ones? Yeah. I bought those.
Oh, you can, you don't believe the crap I got over those chairs, you have no idea.
And your mother was one of them. She gave me such a hard time about those chairs, and you know what? The thing is, you know why I bought them, was because they were cheap.
Oh, wait a minute, here we go.
A hundred bucks for them, that's it. Yeah. Yeah, exactly, but they were.
That was just a trick.
You know where those chairs are now?
Where?
In the dumpster.
Yeah, so...
Really? Well, at least they're still getting used.
Yeah, I got, I got more grief over those chairs, you have no idea.
All right.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, the Board, Town Administrator, Mr. Bowen. Thank you for having us here tonight. We're gonna talk about, we've been working with Mr. Campina over at the sewer treatment plant with some of the ongoing issues. At one of the previous sewer commissioners' meetings, we discussed an article for up to $10 million to solve some of these issues. So I'm gonna go through the project or the presentation to bring everybody up to speed on that. I'm gonna try to keep to about 15 minutes. What we're gonna talk about is just the background, and an overview of the WPCF and how it functions, what some of the issues are, the proposed solutions. We have three kind of proposed solutions that we're looking at, how those solutions were developed, funding approaches, next steps, and then questions. But if you have any questions while I'm going through this, I understand some of this might be a bit technical, so please just interrupt me and ask me. So this is just an overview of the WPCF. I won't go through in detail each one of these, the buildings that are on the grounds, but I will tonight be talking a lot about the equalization basins, which are these two large lined lagoons. They're roughly 1 million gallons each, totaling 2 million gallons. And then also discussion about the denitrification filters. They're kind of tough to see, but you can see them, they're the three little boxes right next to this building, right here. So those are two of the kind of prime culprits that we'll be talking about tonight. Under normal operations, the flow from the three main pump stations in town, which are the Narrows, Hines, and Depot Street, they all come into the Headworks facility, and it flows in this general direction through the treatment plant. There's an anoxic tank, aeration tank, clarifiers, denitrification filters, ultraviolet disinfection, and then out to the, the physical outfall that you can see, it's right on the Agawam River out here. And that's under normal, normal flows, normal operating procedure. So what the issue is, is that we get these periods in the springtime, and it started, we noticed this in March 2008, after the three nor'easters, and again, in this springtime, that the INI flows, which is inflow and infiltration, I'm not sure if everyone is familiar with that term or what it means, but it's basically storm-related flow that comes into the system through sump pumps, through high groundwater, and it's, it's, was, was very high this year, and exceeded the flow capacity of the plant. So when the plant was upgraded back in the late 90s, they put in these equalization basins, which was supposed to be a buffer to contain this additional flow. However, the flows that it was designed for was much smaller than the flows getting today. So these tanks are filling up, and what it forces the treatment plant to do is basically divert flow to another location. And the reason why this is an issue is because the treatment plant has a ground, has a discharge permit to discharge to the Agawam River. It's a surface water, it's not a ground, it's not a groundwater discharge, it's not an ocean, ocean outfall. So when the treatment plant diverts flow from its treatment process into this unlined area, you're in violation of a permit, and that's, that's really kind of one of the biggest issues here with what, with what's going on. So here's an image, when these basins fill up here, the line basins, basically the denitrification filters can't handle those high flows, and the town is forced to divert flow, which is basically wastewater, into this depression area here. It's a, it's already, it's an area that was formerly a depression, so that's, rather than having it spill over these lagoons and create a mess in all directions around it, the town, or, or the Sewer Department is forced to put it into this unlined depression here. And again, there's not a lot they can do, because they're getting flows that exceed the capacity of the plant, so it's, it's, it's a concern.
Weren't there lagoons there before, right? Sledge lagoons or something?
Drying beds, yeah, those sludge drying beds, yes.
We had those in there before, right? We took them all out, I remember.
We took out the underlying, yes, and left the depressions in the ground. There's quite a few throughout the grounds.
Right.
These are just a few of the images of the diversions here. You can see this, the standing water, this is one of the unlined areas, that's right next to the denitrification filters. And the concern with putting this wastewater into the unlined area is, again, you're violating the discharge permit, but you're putting the wastewater directly into the groundwater right there, which is another serious environmental concern. From that, it goes from the groundwater right into the Agawam River, which is very close to, very close to that site right there, it's a few hundred feet back behind it. Again, another image here of what the depression area looks like. So you can see, this is as that flow is infiltrating into the ground, what's left is kind of an area of sludge, where you have all the solids from the wastewater mixing with the soil on top, and there's no easy way to clean this up, rather than to take up all the material out there. So it introduces another step of maintenance and another cost to the wastewater treatment plant that ideally they wouldn't be having if they had properly sized and properly operating equalization basins. One of the other, the other big issue at the treat, that we've been hearing about is the odor concerns as well. So when you get these very high flows in the springtime, what happens is these equalization basins, they don't have time to drain out, there's always standing raw wastewater in these equalization basins for extended periods of times, for weeks, potentially months on end. Equalization basins are, are used to equalize high flows over a day, two, three days, and then be drained down, but when you have raw wastewater that sits in them for a long duration of time, you obviously have resulting odors that come from it.
Well, this, this is worse, because this is like a lot of sludge in the bottom, and they're gonna get more odor from this than you are when they're full with water.
What this shows right here is, this is just some of the, correct, some of the, the material, the matter that forms on top of this from the raw sewage when it's, when it's left for an extended period of time. It's definitely not a glamorous site, it's a very fibrous material that you're working here. And keep in mind that these aeration basins, underneath this is a mechanical aeration system, it's all metal piping and everything, so as that water goes down, all those solids in there, it coats everything, it's very difficult for the staff to clean, it takes up additional operations and maintenance time, and the sump on these basins is right in the middle of them, so you can't reach it with a machine to dig down and scoop down and to clean it out like you could. So they really weren't designed well for solids management, and the longer these, these materials stay in here, correct, it does compound the, the odor issue.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, at one, at one time, there was aeration in the bottoms mixing, so you had a good mixing of the product, and that turned to be very odorous, because it would send the odors into the air. I think it was in 216, we shut the aeration basin, the aeration off, lowered the volume of the water, we diverted about 150, 175,000 gallons a day by using other means. So you have this formulating, because there's no mixing going on whatsoever, because it adds to the odors, it just blows everything in the air.
I don't wanna get ahead, but I would think that just, in order to make, to keep the odors down in this particular situation, when you have these kinds of things, you can't deal with it or do anything, would be nice if you could have some kind of pretreatment before they went in there, or take them out at a different position during the treatment.
This is the beginning, so what we're lacking in the beginning would be primary treatment of primary, primary clarifiers. Which we talked about at one time, it was 12, 14 million dollars to do just the primary clarifiers. They do have technology now that acts as primary clarifiers that have a smaller footprint, less, less expensive, but it's something we're considering in the overall design. We talked about a covered basin with good sloping to remove the solids, so that may serve just as well with a fraction of the cost, so...
Okay, well, I hate to get ahead of you, I'm sorry, but go ahead.
So I apologize for all the, all the bullets on this slide here, but, so the issue is that we have these excessive flows, but what does that really mean? What does that result in? You know, what's the big deal about that? One of the highest ones is, again, it's a violation of your discharge permit. We've worked with a lot of communities on a lot of treatment facilities, and almost all the time, when there's repeated violations of a discharge permit, it leads to a consent order, and that's, that can be...
Get happy, that's for sure.
It can be a challenging situation to be in. Again, we have an environmental issue where we have untreated wastewater going to an unlined area, which has significant environmental impacts. It's nitrogen and bacteria at a much higher level, that's going directly into a resource area, and eventually that could attract negative attention if that, if that, if that keeps happening. Number three, I talked about that accumulation, once that unlined area, you know, after the wet season passes, we have that accumulation of sludge again, and added cost to the treatment plant, potentially adds to the odor situation out there as well. Because of the, the higher flows, the equalization basins, they retain raw wastewater longer, which probably is one of the main sources of the odors. Another item, number five, is that the treatment plant itself was designed to handle these peak instantaneous flows of a higher number, it's five or six MGD, but it doesn't, can't handle those for prolonged periods of time. The main treatment plant was designed roughly 2 million gallons for a flow-through on an average daily basis, but the, the denitrification filters, which is the last step in the process, it's a polishing process, size for roughly one and a half or 1.56 million gallons a day. So that really acts as a bottleneck, so when you get these really high flows, it goes to the plant, then it hits this bottleneck, and it clogs these filters. So what happens when you can't use these filters, it impacts multiple other treatment processes of the plant, so it's not just the filters going down, it's a chain reaction effect, and it's a, it's a, it's a big, big issue. In fact, there, the, the design regulations for treatment plants require redundant filters, so if you take some offline, you have additional ones. Now, the filters that are there now, they were designed before these regulations were in place, so you can't look back and say, oh, they designed it wrong. I'm sure at the time it was designed to the proper regulations, but we have, that's why the current standards are what they are, is so you can take the filters down for maintenance. Number six, the existing, the setup of the existing equalization basins is not very well-suited for solids managements, for the reason we just spoke about, they're not sloped well, the sump isn't in a convenient location. And then again, number seven, the existing incubation basins, just with today's flows that we're seeing, have inadequate capacity. Love to be able to say that, you know, we're not gonna see this next year or the year after, but it's a trend with these rain events, with elevating groundwater. It would be great if it wouldn't happen, but it, it wouldn't be recommended not to plan for it in the future, it's very likely that we'll see these conditions again, if not worse. So how do we fix all these things? Well, there's three kind of main, main items that we were proposing as part of the, the town meeting article up to $10 million that we feel that can, can significantly address these issues. Item number one is basically a third equalization basin, a new lined one, I'm gonna talk more about that in a second. Item number two is an additional denitrification filter to make, so that we get the treatment plant back up to industry standards, and we can alleviate that bottleneck. And item number three is another smaller covered lagoon that is better designed for solids management, and that will be covered to also help with the odor issue. So to look at item number one is, the reason why we have this one listed as number one, this is basically a third equalization lagoon, is because we are furthest along with this process. A few years ago, the WPCF went after a CZM grant to look at how to, how to increase, or how to, how to better protect against these rising flows at the treatment plant, and the solution, we looked at a few different alternatives, was to put an additional equalization basin, that's roughly 2 million gallons. We submitted a grant for the final design and the engineering, which the overall cost was about 200,000, and the grant funded 75% of it, 150,000. And CZM actually has grant programs out there now that fund up to $2 million, because they already funded the first two phases of this, I feel it would be a very strong candidate to get the construction funds. But we don't have that in place, so for that up to $10 million article is, we don't wanna say 8 million, because it's not guaranteed, but again, once we get the final design done, these granting agencies, once they invest money into a preliminary design and a final design, they wanna see it through to construction, so the, so the town does have a good track record with CZM.
Russ, one, and I'm sorry to interrupt, when would those grant applications go and the awarding?
So the one for $2 million, that's the MVP Action Grant, that is actually due mid-November. The trick with that one is, it has to be on a project that was identified in the MVP process, which infiltration and the issues at the WPCF were identified by the town, I believe it was the fourth priority, I wanna say, on the, the top five priorities.
Yep.
The other grant that funds $750,000 is a resiliency grant, and that's normally in the springtime. And again, that one could be tremendously offset the, the cost. We're estimating the construction cost at this at about 1.5 million dollars, because we have done the preliminary design, we have a good understanding of how big that, that needs to be. And the main, again, the main reason why it attracted this area, or this, this solution presented itself, was because of topography. We already have basically a basin there, that's just outlined, we have to dig down, excavate, make it a little larger, make sure it doesn't conflict with any plans for future expansion of the treatment plant, because whatever we build now, we don't want that to get in the way of something in 20 years, saying, well, why'd they put that here, it's just in the way. So we're making sure that we're not, we're spending the money wisely.
At some point, the head end's gonna have to be upgraded, and we knew it was small when we built it.
Excuse me?
The head end is gonna have to be upgraded, we, we knew when we built it, it was gonna be small.
You're, you're absolutely right, Mr. Chairman, that we find out that the vortex, the, the screening for the grid is inadequate, we get a lot of grit through the system, the screening process is inadequate, a lot of, a lot of solids come into the system, so absolutely, that's, we're looking at costs for that now, to get on capital planning, but it's a reality, you're absolutely right. And also the back end, the, the filters, I remember the DEP telling me in 2010 that we have to do something about the filters, because they're failing constantly, and that was with less flow, they were always failing, so it's something we really need to address.
Okay. This image here, this just shows the approximate, you know, this, this is the area we're gonna focus on for that, if we move forward with the third basin, and it may have a different shape than this, but just to get a familiarity with where we're proposing, it'd be...
Can't have much of a different shape, that's the way the area is shaped. Might be shorter.
Might be a little shorter, depending on, it's, it's...
You can't have much.
And there's a few other depressions there that we were looking at as well, so it's, it's in that area. So, so what will this solution accomplish? Basically, if we put this in, it'll reduce the diversions to the unlined area, which is obviously what we're trying to do here, is to, to reduce that permit violation that's going on. Obviously, if you, if you can keep it in a lined area, you're gonna reduce the environmental impacts, which also eliminates that concern about any of the dried sludge building up there, because again, now we have a lined lagoon, we can design it so we can maintain it easily and better manage the solids.
When we do that, we violate our permit, too.
Mr. Chairman?
Violate our permit, cause we're only supposed to put out, what, less than, what is it, less than three, what's our, our permit say, four microns?
Four, actually.
So if you're releasing higher nitrogen amounts, then we're violating the permit as well.
Correct, correct.
Go ahead.
Mark, with the, with the, with the odor...
Pull it in, pull it in. Yeah, I gotta turn it on first.
With the odor issues, I know on the previous slide you had dried sludge as an odor source, I think. Just as a percentage, was, was a dried sludge a major source of the odor, say, as compared to aerating the sludge tank before, you know, would that knock out the odor issue, that bottom one?
It's a good question. So engineers are very reluctant to say eliminate, unless we're 100% sure. I would, I would, if you asked our opinion, you know, one of the primary sources of the odor is obviously the raw wastewater lagoons, because this practice of discharging to the unlined area has just happened last year and this year, it's probably is not a majority contributor, but it's a contributor. So by taking care of this, putting in, we're helping the issue, but it, it wouldn't eliminate the issue. And even when we talk about the lined lagoon, to, to, to focus 100% on the odors, it's, it's very difficult to say that they're all gonna go away. To have a sewage treatment plant with no odors is, if you can find the engineer that does that, hire him right away, that's all we can say.
If you go to the covered, uh, lagoon, I've, tank, holding area, whatever the technical word would be, would that allow you to go back to an aeration system that would, you know, prevent that kind of buildup at the bottom? And then, if you did that, and then you'd end up with all the organic smells within the cover, would you burn those off? I'm not suggesting an eternal flame, but, but that is a, a way to get rid of the issue.
Absolutely, and you could do a couple of things. One would be to pull the air out and put it through a scrubber, to clean it, so when you release it, it's clean, through a biofilter or something like that. And then you could aerate for mixing, and then you could also take a smaller screening process, where you'd pull the solids out, and you'd screen them at the head, and you can actually bag them too, and, and throw them away, so that would reduce odor. So absolutely, that smaller tank would give you all those options to do something like that. And the back end, the sludge is on the ground from the back end, it's already been through the treatment process, so it has less, it's less odorous, if you will. It's more of an earthy, but that can be offensive to people, it's more earthy than raw, so if, there is some odors with it, but definitely significantly less than the raw, the raw odors that we're experiencing now.
And, and that's a good point. So with this, this first option, this new basin that we're talking about, that would not be for raw wastewater, that would be for water diverted out of the clarifier, so it's already gone through some level of treatment, so we wouldn't be adding more raw wastewater, and in fact, would also look at putting in piping to go from the clarifiers to the first, to the original equalization basins. So we can habitually use partially treated water if we have to equalize, that we get away from this practice of using raw wastewater, which has an odor to it, but it, it's not as noxious as the more sulfuric odor of raw wastewater.
And Mr. Chairman, just for your knowledge, we have what we call a high-flow contingency plan, which is diverting everything to the two equalization basins up front, that's raw and fresh. When they fill up, we have no place to go, at that point, the sand filters are out of order, and then we start diverting to the, to the ground. So there is a high-flow plan in place that we took it to the DEP, and they know what we're doing, even though it's not blessed, but it's, it's the only thing we can do, and there's no other options.
I knew, I knew you asked them, they gave you permission in case of, you know, emergency situation.
Yeah, high flow, because when the back end plugs up, it just all goes on the ground Yeah, high-flow, because when the back end plugs up, it just all goes on the ground anyways. So it's good to have an area, you can, you know, kind of constrict it to an area opposed to just everywhere.
But then that creates a lot of your problem.
Creates a ton of problem, because we lose water. Without water, we can't process, because when I'm going through the sand filters, I'm making water to run my, you know, the soda rash, the GBT, the entire process. When I lose the water through the sand filters, I have no processed water, so the power of the process stops, so it really becomes problematic.
So the, the second main item we're talking about is to replace or increase the size of the existing denitrification filters to bring it up to industry standards, and by doing this, we increase the flow-through capacity, the flow-through capacity of the WPCF. Again, this is a bottleneck area, so by bringing them up to the, the right size, we can again prevent any surcharging or need to do a diversion. Big item here is that when the filters get clogged, like Mr. Campina just said, a lot of the other processes in the plant get impacted because they rely on that finished water after the filters. If you have to take those filters down, various other processes come to a standstill at the plant, it really affects the operations. We'll bring the WPCF up to current design standards by doing this, this is obviously something that we want to try to accomplish. And then again, it will reduce the overall dependency of the equalization basins because it can potentially run more through the plant and not get surcharged, but we'll always have a need for equalization. We know we're going to get these just much higher flows than what the plant can process.
So that, that was my question, is that the, the additional basin we were just talking about, the need for that doesn't get eliminated by this section?
For example, if you know, if you looked at Marion's treatment plant, I believe they're, they're smaller than Wareham's as far as a treatment, their discharge capacity is 588,000 gallons per day, whereas Wareham's is almost three times that. They have roughly, it's either 20 or 30 million gallons of equalization there for wet weather flows, it's a tremendously high amount. So Wareham has 2 million gallons of equalization right now, so we're looking to bump that up to about 4 million gallons. So we will still need, have the need for equalization, even if we upgrade the filters.
Okay.
Lastly, the third solution was this covered lagoon that's mostly suited to, to treat odors. Again, it can be covered, there's a number of ways that that, the odors can be treated after that, and again, you can design that so it has a much more convenient way to manage the solids in there. It won't 100% get rid of odors, but it would greatly improve the condition at, at the WPCF. Few thoughts about the funding is, obviously with these major infrastructure projects, I know they're hard to handle and hard to stomach because they're never cheap. One of the more popular ways to fund these is through the SRF program, which is a state revolving fund. It funds, it's a 0% to 2% loan program that funds over 20 to 30 years. And to meet the 0%, it does require multiple conditions are met, it has to be a nutrient removal project and a few other items have to be met. So as of right now, we're estimating these three improvements up to $10 million. Again, we have a, a good handle on the third lagoon, but as far as the denitrification filter and the covered lagoon, there hasn't been any type of engineering to come up with a basis of design, a preliminary design, or anything like that to really come with, with a hardened number, a better number. So we don't want to put a low number up there and then ultimately come back and ask for more, we know that that's a, not a good thing to do, so that's why we're saying up to $10 million. If the town did decide to move forward with SRF funding as part of the application, so what we, what we put, just so, so everyone's aware, what we applied for was a project evaluation form that's basically a notice to DEP saying that the town of Wareham is potentially interested up to $10 million to do these infrastructure improvements. DEP then totals all the communities that put their project evaluation forms in and say, okay, we need 300 or 400 million dollars for all these different projects in all these towns. And then once you get on that list, then you can apply, do an official application for the SRF funding. That application does require an engineering study to come up basically saying why you're applying for what you're applying for. We're not, the town isn't in the position now to apply for any SRF funding, we, that the appropriate steps have not been done. And also that the SRF funding, they don't fund the engineering design, so that's why we're trying to target these CZM grants to get us, which does fund the engineering, to try to knock these out as much as we can. I'm fairly confident that grant programs can offset between 1 or 2 million dollars, if not more, depending on the approach that we take, but there is definitely the possibility for grants for this as well.
Russ, what's the real rough estimate, the engineering cost for the other two phases not probably covered by CZM?
So generally, when we talk about projects like this, the engineering is usually between 10 and 20%, depending on the, the level of permitting, so that's the number we go by. For the other two items with permitting, just to look at a percentage base, roughly a million dollars. It could be less, depending on what, what the final numbers come in at. But this, the SRF funding, it will fund the engineering during construction, basically the construction, yeah, for the construction administration. So those are the engineers on site when it's being built, and the management of construction, scheduling, and all that sort of stuff. So the only piece that the SRF will not fund is the, the development of the final design plans, the engineering. So what are the next steps, really? I mean, obviously, we, we have a discussion tonight, we have a presentation tonight that requires thought, but then a plan to move forward, how we're going to address these issues. If the town, like I mentioned before, if the town does seek, you know, these SRF fundings, we do need to put together what's basically a basis of design. And believe me, I'm the last one to do another report or another study or something like that, but this basis of design is what really comes up with the hard numbers for these solutions and for the sizing, and these are all elements that go into the final design. So it's hopefully not something that just gets put together and put up on a cabinet and that's where it stays. No action is, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, we don't know exactly what's going to happen, but whether it's a notice of intent or a discharge permit, if there's repeated violations, ultimately there, there will be some type of accountability. So if a consent order is placed, DEP can work with the town and say, okay, this is how we're going to solve the problem. And more severe situations, DEP can, can issue how you're going to solve it, they can give you a timeframe with monetary repercussions if it's not met. That's really on the more severe side of things. With that, we'll open it up for any questions.
Go ahead, Peter.
If these improvements are made, is this going to result in a increased capacity for the, for the plant to process? Can the WPCF go to DEP and get the discharge amount enlarged?
It would eliminate the bottleneck now. So if we, if we increased the filters, for example, it could increase the capacity right now, I believe, the flow-through capacity.
But not, it wouldn't increase the, the entire capacity of the plant. We're trying to solve a problem right now, they're, it's not able to fully realize its full capacity. So it's kind of bringing it up to where it should be and not going beyond where it should be.
Is there a way to quantify that? You know, now and tomorrow, what the difference is in terms of what I can handle?
The plant's designed for 2 million, 1.5 is the limitations to the river. That's, that's, that's-
Yeah, that's about the riv- not taking in, it's putting out.
We can't go anymore. The only thing we can do for the river is to play with the loading. So it's based upon 4 milligrams per liter of nitrogen, and so that's where the number comes from. So if we lower our nitrogen, you could technically apply, or actually put more, because your numbers don't exceed by loads of pounding per day and, and that type of thing. It's a dangerous game to get into because any slip or, or unpredicted thing or unaccounted for thing, then you'll have a violation. But when we did the first capacity study years ago, I think it was done by Woodward and Carin, they said we have 156,000 gallons of, of, of capacity. However, with loading, we had 313 gallons of capacity per day. So we decided to stay with the gallons because of the risk of loading. When loading increases, the BOD and whatnot, then you're limiting the amount you can put out, so we stuck with the safe number. But to answer your question, if we remove all the, or at least a good portion, or put the portion of the INI someplace, then that frees up the capacity because the INI right now is taking away the capacity we have. So we just don't have it because that just overwhelms us. You take that out of the equation, then your capacity up to 1.56 becomes available. And so that's the reality of it. So we can increase capacity, not above and beyond what was, we, our design factors because of the river, but get to that number because we reduce the INI.
Funny part is, a lot of the INI that we're treating is groundwater.
I know.
Or pumped water, and that's clean water. So we're taking clean water, we're paying to treat it.
Yep.
It's absurd.
And that problem's being exasperated because as the, you know, we get more rain and weather, then the groundwater comes up, so we have people coming on some pumps that never considered them before. So that's a dynamic that we can't even quantify. It's hard to quantify the existing, we know that every rainstorm, for every inch, there's 150,000 gallons of extra, extra flow. And so when we see rainstorms, we go, okay, an inch, two inches, three inches, to give us an idea what we have to prepare for. And so when we get, I think in the Northeast, we got like nine inches of rain, lights out because there's nothing we could do, we couldn't keep up, and it was like three solid weeks of high peak flow that just blew us up. So we try to predict, but we only have so much that we can do with the predictions, so.
Okay, Mary, I think you had a question?
So-
I'll get you next, Derek.
So worst-case scenario, if we did nothing, then we could potentially have the DEP issue us, you know, like, you guys have to do this now, and it could be something potentially that like the SRF would not fund, or not, we wouldn't be able to fund it through them? Because you said there was certain, there was certain stipulations that you had to meet for-
So you wouldn't be eligible for the most attract, at, at the very least, you wouldn't be eligible for the most attractive interest rate, which is 0%.
What happens if DEP has, or EPA, I guess in this case, if, if they enforce something, then it could be done at a schedule that's not convenient for you? That's, that's the risk, is that right now, if you're proactive. If you're proactive and demonstrate it to them, they'll give you the benefit of the doubt and allow it to happen. I mean, they've been giving Guy the benefit of the doubt to some extent right now, but being proactive will, will allow you the opportunity to do it somewhat on your own terms. I mean, it, this is, it's a bad situation to be discharging raw wastewater to the ground, you know, so it is not a good situation.
And this problem is mostly because of subpumps? Is this, or is this just straight rainfall falling on the property, flooding the lagoons?
We, we, when they design facilities, they anticipate infiltration. No one designs for inflow with subpumps, because subpumps are consistent, so when you design for peak flows, you have the, the tie of the peak flow, and we divert that to the basin and you bring it back in. When you're, when you're dealing with subpumps, that flow stays high and never comes down for longer durations. So the peak design goes out the window. So subpumps are the major contributor to the issue of the overwhelming of the, of the treatment facility. So we talk about getting rid of subpumps, and it's, everything sounds great, and we're trying everything. But the reality is, is you got to go in there, and if I can remove it today, it doesn't mean it won't be back tomorrow. So it's best to deal with the issue, you know, which is to provide for it, hoping for, you know, I'm begging for compliance, but the reality is, if I don't get it, what do I do? But yes, subpumps is something we've been trying to attack, going after legally, whatever, but again, I can't watch the home, I can't be at the home.
Yeah, so if you, if you have a, a bunch of homes, basements are all flooding, it's like everyone draining their, their pools into-
That's correct.
The sewer, okay.
And you also have, again, it's the, so the subpumps are an issue because you have the high groundwater table from the elevated range, but we was, I was looking at some of the information from, coming from Swift's Beach, and even in February, March, when I'm assuming that's a fairly seasonal neighborhood, you still had a very consistent flow coming out of there. So when that groundwater comes up and surrounds these older gravity sewer mains that are underneath, you have all the joints, all the holes, all the, all the, the areas that are no longer watertight that that water is coming right into, so absolutely, it's a combination of the subpumps and also-
That's because it was designed wrong to begin with, it should have been the other way around, it should have been shallow on the water end, so it wasn't 24 feet in the ground, and go, go the other way, and it was a poor design, and that was another engineering company, just so you know. I mean, that was a very poor design. I think, what, 20, 20 feet or something roughly, right? Those pipes are in the ground on one Kinko?
17 feet minimum in the ground along one Kinko, along the water, 17 feet, we have a water table of four to six feet.
Right.
It's crazy.
Yeah, I mean, we had a breakdown there, costs is a fortune to fix because we had to put in, I think like six point wells to, in order to fix it. And it's transite to the, besides, so, you know.
In low-pressure systems, I mean, is, is the real way to go by water, because they, they're tight. There's a couple of things that you do, there's no infiltration design because it doesn't exist, and also when you have these low-gravity systems, if you have a subpump, you can't put it through it, so you have to find an alternative, the homeowner does, it takes the ominous off the town's back, but-
Yeah, I, I still think we should have gone in that direction and changed that whole thing out to low-pressure systems, but at any rate.
All right, so-
Go ahead, Derek, I'm sorry.
Sorry, John. What would it take to have a really solid cost estimate for sections two and three? Because that's my big concern right now, is going to town meeting with really a not solid estimate.
When, when do you need it by?
What I would say is bring that back for spring town meeting, let's get the authorization to maybe do the engineering or some costs to get to the, the next phase, so we can bring more of a solid idea for spring, and that will have us ready for, when's the next phase for the SRF? Is it August or October? Because I think-
So if, if this application is successful-
Yeah.
It will appear on the intended use plan in January, and then a design would have to be submitted no later than next October.
Okay.
That's the timeframe.
Yeah, so we could, we'd still theoretically, if we're taking these first phases, have enough to take it to the next, because it's, we had something good and bad happen at the last one, we had an estimate on a project and it came in much lower, which was fantastic. But at the same time, there's a negative to that, some folks, how can you be that far off, so.
And that, that's a challenge at this stage, to try to put a price tag on something, and there's so many factors that are unknown that come into play. But let us, let us talk internally and then we can, we can reach back out to Mr. Campina and he can board.
Because you got, Russ has worked with you on, on a bunch of them, you're, you know, second to, second to none excellent, and you're sort of like me, you will be hyperconservative in the estimates, so.
I've been on the other side of it, when you start low and you come back high, if it's, it's, I'd like to avoid any more of those in my career philosophy.
And you've been excellent on that, so this is, I appreciate everything, you know, working with the town, so.
Thank you.
All right, Jim.
Are those equalization basins dry right now?
No.
No, okay.
The front one is probably, we've been diverting to that, that's probably about a little over quarter full. The back ones we try to, the back one, we try to empty every day because we get a normal 150 to 175 a day, and for odor, what we do is we try to drain it every day and wash it out, which is quite labor-intensive, but it helps us alleviate the odors for the neighborhoods. We still get them, but-
They're not dry?
No, and, and they're never dry.
Even right now, we've had relatively dry summer, we, we're over capacity because you need to use those basins on a regular basis?
So in the design, I want to be clear, in the design, they, they were designed for the peaks, right? Because you have peaks no matter what.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
And so we're always, they'll never, ever be empty, ever, because they, they handle the peaks. Now, anytime you get rain, that peak increases, so we get more in there, but it, they're never dry.
They're never dry.
Never dry.
And if we put in the equalization basin of the 2 million gallon new equalization basin, that would take care of the pending governmental intervention, correct?
That is correct, because it'll be lined?
And that's 1.2 million dollars, right?
Yes, it would be lined, and absolutely, absolutely.
1.5.
1.5, okay.
Because, because remember, to your point, this isn't going away, so we can put this off for two years, three years, four years, in the interim, we're still doing it, and so that does, the problem's not going to go away, I'm, just that's, that's serious, it's, it's here.
Right, but that would keep you from having to dump raw sewage onto the ground or into the water.
That is correct.
Okay.
Are we putting raw sewage-
All right, so, okay, good, Peter.
Yeah. Can you point to some other town that faced similar issues, and if so, can you describe how implementing similar changes worked out for them?
So, so, so I, I've been in this industry for 25 years, and I've actually never experienced a plant that was having to discharge to the ground, all right? However, there are other instances where a facility will have to go through a, a negotiation with, with the state or with EPA. So usually what will happen is if you do it on a friendly basis, so, so first of all, if you just are proactive and you do it, they are likely to just not-
Right. Right.
Not act at all. If they don't see action, and I think right now, the state is hopeful that something will happen, that's my read on it, if the state doesn't see action, they probably would officially come to Guy, come to the town and-
Yeah. I'm less interested in the regulatory aspect of it than I am in sort of what the outcomes would be.
Oh, who?
For, you know, for plants that have either odor issues or issues with storage, such as this one, what sort of things have you seen in the past, what's worked?
The neighboring town of Marion had, their three lagoons were unlined, and they eventually, a lawsuit was filed against them, because it was felt that a higher volume was being discharged, more than 10,000 gallons per day. It was ultimately either dismissed or settled, but they ended up on consent order to line one of the basins that was originally to line all three, I believe. Now, again, this is just what I read from the newspapers. We don't consult with Marion on their wastewater, but they were eventually forced by consent order to line one of the lagoons.
The DEP could tell you, because they have many instances, and they speak generally, but they can give you specifics, because this is an uncommon problem throughout the Commonwealth. With the high flows and the wet weathers, we're all experiencing, and some are hauls and major issues. Haul's done some major discharges to the ocean, and they're dealing with them. As a matter of fact, it flooded part of a haul out, and it caused great, great harm. So there's many communities that are experiencing. This uniqueness that we have, it may not be the exact type of remediation that you're talking of, but something's being done across the state with multiple wastewater facilities to deal with the issue.
Yeah, I'm just hoping to assure the voters that if we go ahead and authorize up to $10 million, that what is proposed will actually work, and if there's some way to point to another community which face, like I say, obviously you're not going to duplicate the same issues we have, but just something we can point to and say, okay, you know, five years ago, they had these issues, they did this, that, and the other thing, and now, you know, they've succeeded.
That'd be a call to the DEP, to set up some case studies, because they're out there.
One of the things we talked at, capital planning, was we wanted to see as we're seeing greater rainfall, some of the things, the groundwater's changing, what, this is, how far in the future is this projecting or being ready for, if you will?
That's a good one.
Very good question. So what we did is, we looked at the, as part of that third basin that we're proposing-
Yeah.
That was to satisfy the rainfall event in the year 2050, for, basically, now we've all heard these terms, 100-year, 50-year, all that sort of stuff. It's actually only for the 1.5-year, because of the increase in storms that are projected. So that volume was roughly 2.0, right here. Let me just go back to the slide where I put some notes. So the 2 million gallons that we're starting with would satisfy that 2050 24-hour 1.5-year event, and believe it or not, based on the guidance that the occurrence we had in March was around that 1.5-year event. When you look at the individual storms, each individual one, it's just uncommon to have them back to back to back. To go up to what they call the 24, that 100-year frequency, that would require about 3.2 million gallons. So we ended up settling on this roughly a 2 million gallon basin. Now, when we get part of the final design, what we're doing now, we're obviously doing a detailed topographic survey to see what the land areas, and if we can maximize that, the goal is to get, as long as obviously we're doing it underneath a certain cost, we're not going to say we're going to spend $10 million just for a lagoon, but if it comes to find out we can line that entire area, or maybe one of the ones next to it, or come up with a design that can hold more than that, we're obviously going to do it.
Okay.
This was actually done not only through CZM funding, but CZM was actually actively involved in the planning, so the, you know, the analysis that we did, you know, they were a participant in the room, and we all tried to decide, you know, what's the most reasonable, you know, storm event to design around, so.
Yeah, it's an interesting task, predicting the future.
It is.
It's a good one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There's a question from Mr. Sullivan. Of the three components of this, one is very well defined, engineering plan is something. The other two are not. What if, this has not been discussed with the commissions, that we ask this article to be amended to be only one of the three components, being the equalization lagoon, where we know we have a dollar amount in design, and leave the other two until spring, when we can come up with a better estimate for that cost? I don't know if that makes the article so far out of scope that it would not be accepted by the moderator, but it is a consideration, that we only ask for what we know right now.
Well, the thing I would just say is, do you, maybe when we come back, if there's something you're looking at, there's going to be probably a cost in coming up with those projections for the other two, and if we need to cover it through the article, why not have that as part of the article going forward? And as far as scope of an article, I will never speak to the moderator, that's her decision.
So, and you know, it seemed to me that fixing the denitrification portion, which is the log jam, is sort of relatively important. That seems to be, you know, if you had to focus in on something, that's a big one. I mean, if you don't get that out of the way, then you've got, it doesn't help. You know, you can do a lot of other things, and it may help, but that would really help.
That's, I mean, the lagoon and the denite filter are both very important. The benefit of the denitrification filter is Guy, or the, right now, he loses finished water in his plant, and that finished water is used everywhere throughout the plant. Pumps use it, his sludge process, everything uses that water rather than using potable water, so he uses the water that's treated, and he's out of luck when he, when those filters are unable to process.
Right, then he has nothing to mix or anything, so then that's a problem right there, and that's going to add to odors right off the bat, because now you've got nothing to mix, so that's problematic, I get that. The other question I have is, if you cover the lagoon, right, which we're talking about a covered lagoon, you obviously are going to have odors, methane, and different odd things going on there. How do you treat that? I mean, that sounds like a dangerous environment to me, cyanic acid, methane, you know, all these goodies in there, and it's a covered environment. Now you've kind of like, it's almost like taking a fuel tank, gas fuel tanker, and taking all the gas out of it and leaving the fumes inside.
Yep, so there's a couple of ways to treat it. Right now, the facility has odor control systems that are called biofilters, that use bio, you know, bacteria to treat the odors that come off of that.
Which we know isn't working.
Well, so they're used in certain aspects of the facility. Those lagoons are not covered. That's a large area.
Clarifiers on either, right?
No, they're not, but it's, it's not, it's, the odors that we're getting complaints from is specifically to the uncovered lagoons or basins, which is wrong.
Yeah, I mean, we know that that's it.
That's an issue, there's just, that's a major. So by, you know, shrinking what we actually use and covering it, you get that rush. Every time you get a peak flow, when it flows in, it just releases all this odor into the air, and you'll notice the calls, they're very specific in time. It's based, and if you go back to the clock, it's okay, you can see the flow, very, very real. So by taking that, covering a basin for those flows, then you're going to pull that air out and treat it, so you're minimizing the potential of that raw sewer, you know, creating odor issue. That's the design.
Mentioned that it isn't, there is a lot of grease in there that adds to the odor immensely. If you were to go back to the picture of the liquid inside the basin, you'll see all that's, that's grease on top of our raw sewer, which is also very odorous. So if people would be careful about, when you wash, when you have a parent bacon, wipe it out before you wash it. Don't put the grease down the drain, and that's what happens, and that adds to the odor. It isn't just the raw sewage, it's all that organic chemical, organic material on the top that adds to it.
Well, obviously, we're going to have to ask people, and I don't know what the plan is, to step up to the plate and be more responsible as well. The fact that you're dumping water from your basement, clean water, into the sewer system, which we're treating, is, seems absurd to me, and I don't know how we're going to get to them, but we're going to have to work on that. And the fact that we put grease down, and of course, Guy, we still have issues with the places in the industrial park there that are sending us quite a bit of grease, is that not correct?
That is correct. There's, we have some major contributors.
We haven't really come up with a plan for that yet either, have we?
Well, the Duncan Donut Factory's been addressed, and they've done a great job, so that's pretty much behind us. The crouton factory's working really hard towards it, they've made some really great improvements. The new process implant for the malt, that's given a lot of fibrous material, a lot of solids that's consumed, because it binds with it, that we haven't addressed, probably never will, because it's a tough one to address. The candy factory has done a great job, they clean out the kettles and get rid of it before they flush it down the sewer, so they've done a tremendous amount of work. So we have a ways to go, but there's made some tremendous processes been made. They're aware and they're trying to work with us. Because remember, when you talk about the industrial park, it's not a new one, and there's no plumbing for this, so anytime you, if I wanted to put a grease wrap at the candy factory, they're talking $80,000 to $100,000, where if you did it in construction, it may be a fraction of that, maybe $15,000, maybe less. And so, and every, all the pipelines go through the middle of the building, so you've got to jack those out. So because of the original layout of the industrial park, it's, there's a lot of issues trying to get folks to comply, some major issues, and the reluctance is because of the major investment that they would have to make to comply, so we try to work with them.
Well, I think that, you know, whatever it is, we're going to have to start coming up with ways to make them comply, whatever it is. We can't have people in their houses unable to open windows and so on, and not, because people aren't, because it's really not just the plant, it is other things that are going on as well that we need to address. All right, Mr. Hurd, who's on the Finance Committee, I don't usually do this, but he had a question, and I'm going to allow him to answer it, because the Finance Committee has to vote on these things as well, so I'm going to allow them to ask the question. Go ahead, Mr. Hurd.
Mr. Hurd, come up to the mic.
You're going to have to come up to the mic, okay?
Stay there, I'll just take-
And the only reason why I'm doing this is because they have, this article is going to go through them too, and I know they've already taken a vote, but I don't know what's going to change when all this comes to pass, okay?
Thank you very much. Dave Hurd, Finance Committee. What I'm looking at here is three items. The addition of the large holding basin or lagoon is very good, it'll help as a surge tank during peak hours and peak days, which we need. Increasing the denitrification is critical, because right now, that, as Patrick mentioned, is the limiting factor on the plant. Are we doing this now as a interim stage, and what will we be doing in the future to increase the output of the whole plant from the 1.56, which were limited at four grams per of nitrogen, to the actual 2 million gallons, which were allowed to discharge? How can we do that? This just seems like it's an interim step, and we're still going to have to go ahead and increase the denitrification of the plant so that we can get to our 2 million gallons a day.
Good question.
Yeah.
I'm glad you asked it.
Sure, thank you. So another one of the projects we're working on concurrently with this, and that's through the SNAP grant with the Buzzard Bay Coalition, is to do a conceptual design of the expansion of the treatment plant. Long term, we looked at flows as high as 7 million gallons, but we're kind of coming closer now to an intermediate step of about 3.5 million gallons to look to expand the plant under, we're talking 20, 30, 40 years now, with potentially tying in Bourne and Plymouth and maybe even Marion. We need to come up with this number. So we've decided on keeping the same process, the process the plant has now, it's an MLE process, which will require denitrification filters, so if we take an intermediate step now to put filters up to treat that 2 million, ultimately, we'll have to go to three or four, so we want to make sure we have the area set aside to put those additional filters in, so we're not, at the next expansion, disqualifying all this work that we're doing today. So it is an intermediate, if I understand the question correctly, it is an intermediate step, but even as far as future plans go, it would still be a required step, so it wouldn't be money ill-spent per se.
If I could add one thing to that, one thing that this grant is looking at is an ocean outfall, which would alleviate the restrictions on flow that you currently have.
Right, I understand the ocean outfall is the ultimate solution, but if we're spending $10 million at this point, and not really increasing the capacity of the plant on a daily basis for our existing discharge, wouldn't it be better to invest that money and increase the capacity of the plant?
There's no, there's no capacity to increase, because the limiting factor is the 1.56 of the river. If we don't move the outfall, we don't change that 1.56. So we're trying to deal with an issue that's become very problematic, and puts us in a situation where we could be reprimanded for not doing the right thing. So to get to 2 million, where do I put it? I can only put 1.56 in the river, that's it. I can't put another gallon. So if I designed a 2 million, I still can only put 1.56. The concept of moving the outfall, by just moving the outfall, gives the immediate 2 million gallon, because the plant can treat that, and you gain that 40,000 gallons of instant flow. But without moving the outfall, that's not even in the cards, it's not even play.
But the 1.56 is based upon the nitrogen content of the discharge.
It is, it is.
So if we could reduce the discharge concentration in nitrogen, we could increase the discharge of the plant.
And I get that. We've been averaging 2.2 nitrogen for the last six years.
That's pretty good.
And we addressed it to the EPA. The risk you run is if that number comes, so if we design everything to that 2.2, and if we come up to 2.8, we're in violation. So the four gives you a buffer. I'm not a gambler, so a lot of people are. If I, if three's my number, and that's a good number, if I'm at 3.5, I have a buffer. That's my conservative, if you will. So because I'm doing 2.2, I'm not going to design to 2.2 and say, that's what we're doing, because next year, that may change. It may be 2.8, and then I'm in trouble. So I'm not going to go there, I choose not to go there. I don't want to go there, but the town can go there. That's a town decision. You can, we, this past three or four months, we're doing less than one, up to 1.5. So our nitrogen numbers are phenomenal, they're record-setting and they're incredible throughout the state. However, I've got to maintain that, and if I don't maintain that, then I run a risk of violating my permit. So by, the EPA is fighting, was now the lowest of three, then you go to two, then you go to one, you're obligated to one. You go to 1.1, and you're in serious trouble. At four, if you blow it, you're great, and so it gives you a lot of room. So if you have a bad month, or a bad two months, you can cover for it, because it's a rolling average. If I lower that number, then I'm really under the gun to make those numbers.
So are you working on a rolling average or instantaneous average, instantaneous number?
We do numbers every month we put through the DEP. If we violate, we violated a couple of things. Phosphorus this year, we violated our bacteria, and they send us letters and saying, you've got to do something, you've got to do something, that's EPA. If I continue to violate, then they're not going to send any more letters, they're going to come down and say, here's what you're going to do. So we are violating other parts of our permit. So that's a scary factor, what this is causing, because what we're doing doesn't address nitrogen. Nitrogen's not our issue, it's the ammonia, I'm sorry, it's the bacteria, it's the phosphates. Those are things that we're violating, I have to address. I can't continue to ignore them. These are actual violations that are registered with EPA presently, and we've got two notices to do something. So that's the urgency of getting something done to get rid of that, is what we're trying to accomplish.
So this is an interim step, an ongoing process?
Yeah, that's right, it's interim, but more importantly, it's addressing a violation, it's addressing an issue that we're presently facing, that we can't, it can't go away, and it's not going to get better. So it's going to continue, and the longer it continues, you know, my fear, to be frank here, is that they'll come after my license, not you, not yours, not yours, they'll come after my license. So it's my livelihood on the, so I'm a little more passionate about it, because it's my livelihood on the line, so that's where I'm coming from, but anyways.
So we're good on the nitrogen?
Nitrogen is phenomenal.
Right, and the violation has to do with discharging the storage into an unlined pit?
So-
Right, and then where's the phosphorus issue come from? How do you address that?
So the phosphorus, we address by precipitating out, precipitating out the solids. So because of the high flow, it washes these solids out and into the basin, and then it gets into the sand filter, into the denite filters. That goes out to the back end, we draw the sample, the night the phosphates are high, so we can't meet phosphate permit. The bacteria is that when the flow comes high, it raises the whole level of the UV, and when the UV is totally submerged, it can't kill, it cannot sterilize the product, so we're putting out, we're putting out bad numbers into the river, so that's-
So your storage is above the UV light?
Absolutely.
So that's the issue, is the lights are too close to it?
And the tubing from the solids.
They go up and down, or they're just fixed?
So there's a flap around the back that controls the flow to keep them in a very steady-
Right, the lights themselves.
But because the flow comes up, the flap goes up, and the flow's too high, and there's no way we can, we can, we can kill.
No adjustment.
There's no way, because it goes to the highest point, it's above that, there's no way we can, I can't, I just, nothing I can do.
The design that doesn't allow you to-
Absolutely, so we're in violation. And so that's because of the high flows and all that, so the diversion to the unlined basin we've been using helps alleviate that, because we've got someplace to put it, to lower that flow, so we can stop that violation.
Keep it even.
But it's lined, it's unlined, so that becomes an issue.
No, if you line it-
That's right, then it's, then it's not an issue.
Then the phosphorus issue goes away.
Everything goes away, because I can slow the flow down.
Nitrogen's good already, right?
I'm sorry?
Nitrogen's great already.
Nitrogen is great. I can't complain about nitrogen.
Okay. All right, I, I just want to point out one other thing that everybody should realize. When we built that plant and upgraded it, it cost us 24, I think 24 million dollars. Okay? Um, and we, we came to a four micron, um...
Four micron per liter.
...permit, and we met it, right from day one. We were meeting it, and that's pretty amazing considering Plymouth had the plant prior to us, and they had a seven, and they haven't never met it yet, as I understand it. So, uh, you know, the technology's working, so whatever, whatever's happening is that's working. But the thing to remember is, it cost 24 million back then to build the whole plant upgrade. This is 10 million to do a portion of the plant. It's only getting more expensive. So whatever has to be done, we're going to have to think about getting, stepping up to the plate and getting this done before it starts to cost us so much money that we can no longer afford it. I know that, uh, what happens is, and we're sort of in that ballgame right now, aren't we, that if we put any more, more people on to sewer, the problem we have is that the, the, the cost, uh, for the betterments are too, will be too high.
Absolutely.
Because we don't have enough houses to spread it out amongst.
And Mr. Chairman, something we don't talk about is when we put a sewer area, whether it be Rose Point or Oak Street, these two bedroom colleges become mega mansions. That's flow that's not even calculated, because it doesn't come into inflow, because you do design for inflow. But those numbers, and we allow that, and one of the things we talked about many years ago to get zero percent is to, is to restrict growth, because that's sewer. And so as those gallons, one, just one area where gallons are increasing, that we're not accounting for. So there's many, many, along with the sun pumps, there's many, many reasons why the flow's increasing, and we just can't do it. And then the wet weather on top of everything makes it difficult to, to get, to, to do the job.
All right, well, thank you for your presentation, gentlemen, and I'm sure it's going to help everybody make a good decision. And we'll go from there.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
Appreciate it, thank you for coming. I know, uh, we kind of put it together quickly, so.
Thank you, gentlemen and lady.
Gentlemen and ladies, yes. I, I don't want to forget her, because she's, she's a true...
Mrs. Slavin.
And, and she's here on the holiday.
She's not Jewish.
No, oh, that's right, I forgot, she's not a...
She's not.
That's right.
Nope.
All right, let's move on. All right. Uh, discussion and vote and recommendation of town meeting articles. We, we don't have any numbers yet, do we, Derek, for the final, uh...
No, the, um, on the, it looks like on the 21st, we're trying to get the state in for the, uh, for the free cash calculations, so...
Okay. Uh, the one, and one of the other things though is Peter was, uh, good enough to start putting the motions together and leave spaces for the numbers, so that at least the motions are in. I hope that has pleased Madam Moderator, because she's been pressing, so...
Yep.
She's not here to say, but I hope that that has pleased her. All right, vote on disposition of, uh, surplus property.
What, what is a property?
Um, it's, um...
It's a list right here.
Yeah, it's, um, Dodge Chargers Crown Vic from the police department.
Ah, ah? Yeah, I sent it ahead of time.
No, no, I was thinking like the junk that we had of last time.
Yeah.
It's a police car, it's okay.
Do I have a motion, please?
Okay, I move that we declare, um, the, do you want me to list them individually?
Yeah, you can read it quick, because it's short.
Okay, the 2001, the two 2011 Dodge Chargers, two, one 2013 Dodge Charger, one 2010 Dodge Charger, one 2008 Crown Vic, and one 2010 Ford Expedition, um, to, wait a minute, let me see.
Surplus property.
To the surplus property, the request of the acting police chief.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Application for...
Can I just, uh, quick?
Yeah, yeah.
So what do they do, auction them off, sell them?
They'll, um, they'll get a value for them, and depending on what that value is, you can either do it as part of a trade-in or an auction, or, you know, whatever's going to give us the best value.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just didn't know the process.
Yeah.
So I, it's good to know. If you get a value, that...
Yeah.
Application for onset four, four square church, place signs on town property.
I move that we approve the onset four square church's request to place flat, uh, signs on town property.
Second.
Uh, this is for trunk or treat, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
You want to just make that announcement, the 31st Lopes Field trunk or treat?
Yep.
All right, now, uh, we've got, uh, discussion with Sewer Department. All right, next is, um, any town business not reasonably anticipated last 48 hours? Derek, do we need to, uh, put in the, uh, for the auction? Do we need to do that now?
Um...
Because we don't have a meeting next week.
It should be in time for the, uh, 22nd. If you want to do it now, then do a confirmatory vote on the 22nd, so it's on the agenda. And the reason being, we have, uh, they, I was notified that we're scheduling an auction for three properties that we've taken through tax title, and it's scheduled for November 14th, 2019. The three properties are 62 Rose Point Ave., which is a single-family home, 332 and to 334 Onset Avenue, which also was listed as a single-family, although it looks like there's, uh, two addresses, and 156 Blackmore Pond Road. Um, some are in pretty tough shape, but they're, uh, good auction values.
We're going to make you the...
Custodian of the November 14th, 2019 auction.
So moved.
There you go.
Second.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by Mary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Does that require a...
Did you have a question?
Go ahead.
So, these are just surplus properties took by tax title?
Not surplus, yeah, they're, they're tax title property. We've taken them for taxes, basically. Yeah, so, uh...
Foreclosing on the tax liens and selling them off.
And the reason I say different is a surplus property would be like Everett School if we were going to...
Something we already owned.
Sell that.
Right, I'm with you.
So, all right?
Thank you.
Okay, um, do we need to do a, it's, a regular vote's okay for that, Rich?
Okay.
And I, I would like to just have the confirmatory on the 22nd, if you don't mind.
We'll put it on confirmatory on the 22nd.
Thank you.
Um, I think we're within the timeframe, but just in case, we should be all set.
Yep, no problem.
Um, that was 48 hours business, so...
Town administrators report, please.
This is one of the things, which is why I mentioned Everett School, is there's a, um, religious organization that's inquired about purchasing Everett School. It is sitting there, um, maybe we put it out for RFP and see what sort of bids we get on that property, unless you can think of anything else. Doesn't mean that we have to sell it. It, it was turned over to the Board of Selectmen through a town meeting article for, um, yeah, disposal was one of them.
Well, my question would be, uh, is it going to be tax-free? Is it going to be a tax-free property if they purchase it?
We, you know, we could, I guess you could put in the proposals, that'd be more like an RFQ.
You're saying, right?
It's whoever, it's on an RFP, if we're just doing for the proposals, whoever has the best proposal wins, so...
I see the look on his face.
You know, I understand, because usually we want to get these back on the tax rolls and make it so...
Exactly, that's the whole point of getting rid of them. Otherwise, what's the sense? What does it do for us?
Right, the one, and the one-time funds from that would go to the sale of real estate fund, it doesn't go to the general fund.
Well, so it's, it's, you know, it's almost meaningless if we don't get it back on the tax roll. Go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if, if it's a tax, it's, if it's a charitable entity, and the property is used for the purposes of the charitable entity, it's tax-free. Property tax-free, so...
If they were renting it out or something, it would be taxable, but...
Now, you, um, with the police station, you said we're going to look to see, uh, get an appraisal and a value of the property, correct?
Of the police station.
Would we do the same on this school building, or, I mean, we should know, have a good idea of what the value is and what it could bring in before we... That's my opinion.
Right, we can go to the Finance Committee to request funds to do, get a commercial appraisal. I don't have funds to do that. What we would use is the valuation through the Assessing Department, but if we want a commercial appraisal, that's another matter.
That's like a half a million dollars, I think, on that property.
Yeah, I think it's 400-something on that. It's, it's got a decent valuation, yeah. So if the board wants to do, do that first, to get a, a commercial appraisal, I have no problem, I just have to seek the funds for that.
What if we gave it to the Redevelopment Authority to come up with a plan to make it a more valuable piece of property for the town?
I'm a member, so don't ask me.
Are you going to put a new roof on it, fix the fascia?
I don't know, what is, you mean, I'm asking you, you're a member of the committee, what do you think? Do they have any potential to turn it into something else that would, uh, make it more valuable to the town?
Yeah, there, there's potential to, to look into it, to do it. I think, I think West Wareham would be the best project for that, because I think that one, you, you could potentially subdivide into actual housing from the building itself, plus the lot that's with it, plus that whole piece of land. That's, that's a very, that's a very nice piece of property.